So I could get so many kind of work. That program is actually pretty good.
I didn't do much.
It helps the layman understand what you're doing wrong. I don't know if you guys have finished the effort.
Everything's wrong, no? Yeah, I did.
I mean, you, yeah, we can do just about anything wrong these days. What's good about it is it's understandable to the layman and it's wrong about that.
And we put it on?
I mean, not, nothing?
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, that's right. Finds himself to be the world-class hacker. Is that on his business card?
Yeah. So it was a joke that we actually took it because he got into this.
The strappers must be in.
Yeah, they were. They must be going to fish. Here, I'm fishing fish.
Out on the boat or on the beach?
On, off the beach, but in the boat.
Okay.
Now are we getting hands for workshops everywhere else?
I like, I like how you have like everything from like big, big boats, dad's kayak right in the middle.
If they see a kayak, fuck, like this move, you know what happened.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's on.
What?
Elijah Higginson.
Morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
I don't stand a drop line at some point in this.
Jeff, I haven't heard from you. Good morning.
I'll check for you, Joe. I'll try to get you.
Yeah.
When Joe gets back. What's that, Chris? All right, good morning, everybody. Thanks for being out for today's workshop. We can begin with the fight.
Actually, this is to the life of the United States, United States of America. This is a recovery program for citizens who are in danger of one nation under God. This is what we do as a whole, every single day. Just a scroll.
Yeah, and, uh, Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is now called the order in line with the Department of Public Right, Small State and Possible Open Government and Compliance to the Public Meetings Act. I wish to invite you to add the notice that this meeting was sent to the Esri Park Press and other local newspapers on January 10th, 2023. Each instance, the date and time and location of this meeting was provided in the notice. This meeting is open to the public. Roll call, Councilor Ms. Bieber.
Here.
Booker.
Here.
Padilla. Gorman.
Here.
Keeler. Lamia.
Here.
And Eric was here. And again, we'll see if Sam's supposed to be calling you. I told him last night. All right, so first up, does anybody online or in person like to be heard? Uh, you have up to three minutes to address your government files. Just please state your name and your address. All right, we'll move on to the discussion, Joe's up with Capitol Projects.
Um, thank you. Um, not too much to update this morning. However, uh, the, in, the, uh, presentations for the Mad Hatter are next week. Um, the project team is, uh, is Roger, Jennifer Beam, our planner, uh, Greg Blash, our engineer, Mike Baskin, and myself. And we'll be doing the, um, the interviews with the, uh, four bidders. And then we will present that, them to Borough Council, and we'll see what our next step is. Um, the court case keeps getting postponed. It's been postponed again. The Kelly, uh, Kelly's, uh, court case with, uh, with their appeal of the borough's, uh, abandoned property statute. But, uh, it just keeps going on and keeps getting postponed, postponed, postponed.
It's, it's chronic. It's, um, no, I mean, it's chronic in the courthouse. Judges keep getting postponed. Judges keep pushing stuff. Well, yeah, it's, um, backlog.
And they are, uh, they are also waiting for the EDA to make a decision whether they will, uh, subordinate the mortgage. It seems a little, uh, it just doesn't, the EDA's been dealing with this for five or six years. They either say, it's either yes, we will subordinate the mortgage to the finance company, or we will not subordinate mortgage to the finance company. So, uh, I'm not quite sure why it's taking years and years and years. They've been on top of it. They, they know what's happening. But that's the primary, that's one of the reasons they do. And as Rich said, there's a backlog in court and judges could keep putting it off.
Hey, Joe, can you just refresh us on something? Somebody is buying the delayed tax payment.
Correct.
And if I remember correctly, that comes actionable in November of this year.
You're correct.
Remind me what the level of authority and ability to do something that person has. They can foreclose?
They can start this year in November. They paid for the two years, I believe, that's required. And they can start foreclosure proceeding, uh, if they're not paying, uh, this time. So, you know, I suspect the finance people that the Kelly management has is going to try to pay them. Be, since they're, we're kind of the first, uh, lean, but, but they're actually, uh, um, right after us.
Cause my understanding is sort of our hands were tied somewhat by the delays in the court, the EDA response. What I'm trying to get at is this person that holds the lien on a, a linked tax actually have the authority to make something happen.
They do.
And what would that something be?
It's
And if they fore, if they foreclose, does that mean it goes back to a court for evaluation? Or do they say, I take over the property?
They can take over the property if they foreclose, if they're first in line. Well, they can't take over the property because by court order, uh, the borough has the property. But they could get paid their billing for taxing.
That's it?
Yeah.
They can't foreclose on the property and say, I'm now going to do something with it?
Normally they, they would, but in this situation, I don't think that's the case because, uh, it's court order that says the borough has control of the property.
So suppose, I don't even believe it, but suppose town says, I'm fine with the no-holders doing whatever they want with the property. Because, I mean, at least from my assessment, this thing is going to go on for years. Right between the EDA, court backlog, Kelly financing, you know, all this kind of stuff. We're going to be sitting here two years from now with that building still sitting there. What I'm looking for is who actually has the authority to do something and get it done. So
Well, I don't know that they would have any leg up in terms of the borough, in terms of the, the court proceedings, um, or the EDAs. Are they, they'd be, I mean, I'm just thinking of, you know, top of my head. They would mean to say in shoes.
Yeah, as I say, I mean, yes, I think that if we came out of an act that, that would say.
Take what, I'm sorry.
Who would we have to have this thing able to foreclose on if they're kind of advocating to them?
I, I, I appreciate, this is a little unusual because we're in control of the property. I guess under normal circumstances, Rich, a foreclosers are foreclosed.
A forecloser, a forecloser. They first, if they're first in line, they're going to foreclose it and that's it. I mean, this is unusual because usually there's not a court order because it's an abandoned property thing and somebody else has control of the property.
Could we at least review that a little bit determinate, is any there there for us to be able to do something? Cause I, I don't know if anybody feels differently than me, but I feel like we're going to be sitting here a year and a half, two years from now with the same boat we are today. And that's unacceptable.
My guess, though, I, it's not being an attorney, I would think it's going to be the same way as somebody gets through.
That's why it was our sense, whether or not that row was through the course.
Yeah. It's not like the worst.
Yeah, it's all you.
Any consideration to get us a dumpster there?
Yes.
Well, I've been talking about that for a while, which is sad. See, okay, a dumpster there so we can clean up the property?
In time, you guys, maybe I just want to make sure everything's in place so people just don't start coming in there. Has to be a time.
They're starting at the beginning of November.
If we want to get our team together to, to start throwing in all the trash in there. But I, I kind of agree with Dave, you know, if you just let it sit there.
It's like an open invitation.
We probably don't need it for more than if we want to do it on the weekend or during the week or whatever. It's not really. All right, let's, uh, we'll schedule it. We'll give you a date, Dave.
Could you get just a quick estimate on spray paint that would, uh, why would it stuff? Cause it looks like Alan and people stopping on the street all the time. I mean, you guys know that. So we could get a lesson, and that goes on, who would actually pay that everyone?
Delete.
A dark color, just so it blends in a little better.
I don't know what's there, but look, I'll get you a brush.
Yeah, I mean, the best looking side, the best looking side of the building is the south side.
Exactly.
But it's contiguous in that one. When we paint the other part, she got all of the stuff, but
That's where you board it up.
Yes, make sure the painter prints it.
I got your mouthwash in this. Make it like the sky in New York.
Joe, do you have a capital part?
Yeah, sorry.
All right, we can move on to public safety update. All right, so that means, uh, Um, September, busy one, ninety-one, good month. Which is actually, I think, a bit busier than August, actually. For instance, two to five sixty-three for you. Yeah, much going on. Um, as you guys saw that email about deal and the Ocean House.
That was awesome.
It was, I, I would, I stayed down with the, the kids, yeah. Aside from that, uh, I spoke with Councilman Bieber about the ordinance, fire ordinance, chapter twenty. Uh, need to be revised, updated. So I'm going to work on that with Councilman Bieber and just maybe try to get that squared with the court act right by the table. So not much, um, we changed our Bible laws in, in the company and the two have to fuck each other. Sorry for that. Hey, Brad, again, a pleasure, a pleasure. Great, happy to tell us.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
You guys hear me? All right, September, which too busy as always. We had, um, I'm sorry, about that, four hundred and twenty-six calls for services, all the normal stuff that we always had in September. The fights, the DWI's and domestics and so we persons, the year meetings, the tickets. When it came to the number of tickets, I only went over with her, but I'll just share with everybody else. September twenty-three, a hundred and thirty-nine paid apart, twenty-seven permanent parking, twenty-four fifteen thirty-five business, sixteen tow ways, thirty eight municipal parking regulations. Our employee spots, one. Got him, Joe. He points at the window all the time.
Who is that?
So that'd be crazy, but we got the comments, I don't have to call it a year numbers, I'm not going to. We know our program was way up. I don't have the exact number, but it was pretty high from last year. Just some quick notes I had made. We are currently accepting applications for next year because it comes up quick and the academy starts in January. We already have to get it for physical, psychologicals, do the evaluations. So we're working on that. We have everyone, a couple of our people went down to the mom of vocational school for law enforcement. We interviewed people for next year, too, for Boko class ones to write tickets which we need. I don't know if they can ever compare the ones we had this year. Rich, thank you again with the shore regional kid thing. That was a good help. Sent out the letters, everybody still could jump out and see where it goes.
We're having a difficult time getting the names of, uh, the children that go from Seabright, they go to Shore, um, and Ocean Court. It may be a result of, uh, the litigation that's going on, but law enforcement really needs to know. And there's no reason that they should not know.
Still like that for a couple of years.
It's more like, for the team, the issue is not just getting a response from anybody.
This would mean if we're flooded, if we have to, if a child has to come home or can't get home, we need to know.
Last year, I think we had three floods at times.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. To the line to pick up or drive off, and it was nightmare.
And there are
And we don't know.
We don't know.
And we have no, hopefully schools know nothing. I don't even know, I, I don't even know how many kids actually from Seabright even go to these schools. I don't think we even have the correct number. So it's something to look at and try to do the best I can. With that being, um, they did set up a jewelry on the end of Church Street. Two houses, their driveways are blocked in. I went over there, I spoke to the form, and they were helping in and out any way they could. But suddenly we figured out what was going on. That jewelry was set up and it was in the ground, so it wasn't being moved. I've been there every day trying to help them. It's, it's a big project. Heaven is going forever as we speak right now, so we're working on that and, um,
It's like six weeks, right?
At least six weeks. And if you see the way the jewelry, I mean, one little thing I think goes, it can easily go longer.
That's not what we were told.
Well,
I mean, we were at the meeting, they said that they wanted to block driveways.
They have two driveways at the end, number thirty-four, and I think it's number nineteen, so, um, hopefully they can get them in that. But I did reach out to number thirty-four, I think they called us, Chris did, that is, yeah, they, she never called me back, even to her house. And for public safety, that's all I'm going to give you right now. I have more stuff, there's not, uh, you guys have more stuff.
Okay, well, you went, you had a piece of that, so okay, are they better shaped than anything?
Yeah, we think so. We got some more recruits. We have people on one floor of the academy, so it was getting a little rough yet for one, but I think with our recruiting, we do a pretty good job. We're going to get them, you know, and really get them in here. Um, we have two new academy, they're going to graduate in December. Anything else, any questions?
Just a couple of comments, very quickly. As the chief said, we had a meeting to review, um, violations in comparison to the last couple of years. Not that we want to be a violation, we're going to handle, we do want people to follow the rules. And just a quick update on the parking area, which the chief and the team is really focused on. Just some numbers. In twenty twenty-one, the number of parking takes given out is fifteen hundred. Twenty twenty-two was eighteen eighty-nine, and this year over three thousand. So the implication to that is significant in that we're trying to drive better behavior, but also we've got significant increase in court violations, fees, and revenue. All the numbers aren't in, uh, according to the fire meeting, that the, uh, revenue generation through this was up over seventy-five percent compared to last year. So again, not that we want to be taking in hand, but we want people observing the rule. And I want to thank the chief and the department for increasing enforcement, which we asked them to do. We specifically said by adding the additional officers, we were looking to increase enforcement, and this is clearly an effect of that. The other thing I was happy to see is with Esten, we pay closer attention to the beach. Uh, this year we had thirty-five takes to alcohol on the beach, which is a tough thing to track around, people could, or whatever, and stuff like that. But in response to the additional officers, the additional attention, I think, he's doing a great job in addressing the issues enforcement to with Esten.
So it's very clear that the revenue generated pays for spades, additional support, right? So we shouldn't have an issue.
Then that's an assum, because if you remember, by the officer that departed,
Yeah.
we were able to pick up two in a year.
Right, absolutely.
But absolutely, the revenue generation is very helpful.
And do you know of those three thousand, how many were non-residents? Second, a hard thing, that's a hard thing.
I would think it's probably
I would think so, too. So again, it's providing a service and a relief to the residents that get hit pretty hard.
I would say, Heather, if most of those three thousand were low residents.
You'd hear about it.
No, it would definitely not be three thousand. It would, it's a lot, and I, and I said, it's, I don't even think you can even top last year's number. And obviously, no, and I'm thinking we had, you're like, oh, I don't even know if we can even top that number again. Every time we hear us say we can't top it, then we want to do it, so.
I don't think you have to worry about topping, but it's providing relief that is paying for itself.
I mean, that's
Right, that's what I find.
We, we wanted it to improve behavior more than we were focused on the revenue. But, I mean, a very clear example of this is when we walked to downtown, you and I did, we counted a hundred and twenty houses and two hundred and forty-one parking spots. Which means there's about two for every house, which is the passes we give out. Well, previously, added town people would park illegally there and accept a fifty-dollar ticket, and it would take spots away from the residents. We're trying to curb that dynamic so that less people parked there than shouldn't be, and it opens more spots for the residents, which is a challenge for us at the beginning. So the add-on effect in addition to the revenue incurred with that behavior is it's improving availability of spots for residents. That's really it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, are you really with a product that Monmouth Beach has that re-plays?
The players, yes, we looked into that software. Um, they have three, we set up in certain locations, and they get stolen cars into the town. Um, we looked at it, it's less expensive, you know? Uh, but the amount of stolen cars that Monmouth Beach was getting, they paid for it. A lot of towns have it. We actually benefited from it, too, because there's one separate ownership, so they come through, they're, we're getting the call out, too. So we'd like to have one, yeah, but we're kind of surrounded by a lot of towns already having, so sooner or later, we're going to get a hit, and I think Monmouth Beach must have, uh, get this guy right now.
There's a stationery, they're not
There's stationery, and you can see it, one right in front of the cultural center, it's a symbol.
Yeah. Where's the one in Ronson? Okay. I don't know, I don't mind.
I think that one is right on, uh, coming in to see, right? I think there's one
So then we're like literally on the highest.
And is it like a fifty grand, two hundred grand?
Uh, what was the total of the challenge, I mean, it was about, the original score was probably around fifteen thousand. And then it was, but again, they contracted the software and the five-year minimum. It was a lot. It was, wasn't cheap, it was well at our price range, you would even think a guy, maybe something for the next year budget, um, but I don't know.
But if you're surrounding it, too, and it means for
Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, it would be nice, but to have that, so. Tell me something about, actually, thank you. I don't want to go over that.
No, I, it doesn't, no, I'm just saying, if we are surrounded, then what's the need for us to have one? And that's the, you know, question.
Okay. All right, I know Sam put the twenty twenty-four beach fees on the agenda. I spoke to him last night, he just wants to go on and talk. He, I mean, I asked him what his thoughts were, he seems to think keeping everything status well, I guess, for beach fees. But I did ask him to check, which managed to confirm. So if you carry the next video, I would expect him to choose. And they may have a million dollars won out, but it's going to be simple to say as is, but I did ask him to check that.
Well, if they change the weather, then you know.
Yeah, we have, we have to approve the fees. You don't need to know that. But we, we basically just want to, if there was any change, anyone recommend it in the beach?
Yeah, if you want to put out, if you can still put out the next agenda for a vote, we know it's changing and needed.
Okay.
That's through that.
We'd like to get a moment.
Yeah, yeah, we do that.
Does anybody have, does anybody have a sense that we should make an adjustment? For any reason, adjacent towns?
We only looked, if you recall, that there was that Monmouth magazine that gave all the beach fees. And we were, we were average, but many were ten dollars a day instead of eight dollars a day.
And then a lot of things, like free for seniors, we charge for seniors.
I mean, we don't have a sense
Hey, uh, hey, phone?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, hey, I, I may, uh, one, uh, uh, question of, uh, of these fees. Uh, I think it's important that we stay, uh, kind of, kind of in the, in the end, or perhaps are we maybe, uh, on our, um, uh, fee structure? But I do think that, that there is value, and I think we should, um, uh, look at, uh, a, a, a senior beach badge or, or something like that. At a discount rate, we're free for our, our senior residents. Um, it's just something to think, I, I was talking to Sam about it, but I'm, I'm just putting it out there as something that, that would be a nice gesture for our seniors. Uh, but also making sure that the overall fee structure is competitive, not the highs, not the lows, but just sort of in the middle.
Like, we can do a quick review for
Yeah, I think it's important to do the discussion.
We'll do a quick review for the, I mean, there's only what? Twenty towns. You got it?
Can't wait to talk about this.
Twenty can say.
Yeah, we have all our discounts, too, in that, just in years.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I would go by the advice of each manager. Yep. I go, I draw onto the RFPs.
Is that time of year? That we go out for RFPs for our professional services? Just kind of a reminder, um, we, uh, you know, we go out for pretty much every professional and, uh, Chris, when will they hit the, hit the street?
Probably, a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Our review time is November, at the same time?
Well, the, um, submission date is December eighth.
Submission to us?
Yes. So it'll be out probably three weeks.
We reveal before the holiday, before Christmas.
Correct, and then it goes on our, uh, review meeting. Um, draft ordinance is, yeah, Chris, I'm sorry.
There was a couple that we had questions on, um, if we're going to do an IT consulting, a cloud communications consulting, and if we're going to continue with the very IT consulting.
Well, I don't know that there's any one going out for our RFPs, but, um, I don't, that's up to council. Uh, IT, I think, you know, we're all noticed that we're kind of conceding our bid limit. I don't know, IT is a little different, Rich, uh, in as much as, uh, you know, it's, it's more of a, uh, a different kind of service.
Well, I mean, you're not statutory, you're fired, you're an IT. Question of, um, what's most feasible for them.
Yeah, we probably should do
Can you really change that kind of consulting?
No. Uh, I think we need to do the IT, and we'll talk about the brand rigor again if council wants to continue that.
Whether, whether, whether we continue with the current arrangement, um, or not, we, we, we should, uh, still, still cast a dent, in my opinion, to see what's, what's our.
Chris, so the A and B, we were, I think we're ready for the fire, fire pit ordinance, any white ornaments, are we done?
Well, I don't know. Let me, I have a couple of time. So the fire pit ordinance, um, is also circulated for all of us. I've already been, worked with Rich on this, worked with Tom Hagee. There was an outstanding question about whether or not we could put anything in it about smoke on fire pits. Tom and I discussed that at length, and he said, all of the towns around us are not including that because of the subjectivity of it. Noise ordinance, you put a decimal meter, we can tell, smoke is kind of tough. So he recommended we don't include it. If there's an issue that the neighbor has a problem with smoke, they call the police department or the fire department. There is, um, an ordinance in place that now instructs our professionals what to do about it. So that was circulated to all of us. I recommend we go forward with it. I'm comfortable with it, having reviewed and worked it, and Rich has done with it and sent to all of you. So I would like us to close that one out and be done with it. Okay, moving on to electric bike. Um, Jim was kind enough to put together a draft for us. We had a couple of meetings to talk about that subject. Really what we're trying to do once again is put the police department in a position where they can actually enforce something. Cause right now we have nothing on the books. So whether it's, you know, driving in the wrong direction, driving on the sidewalk in the wrong place, going too fast, or whatever the police may hate. Rich has taken the first chop of that. I, I went through that. Um, I would not consider that ready for prime time yet. I would say we should all take a review of that. Any comments or questions, and just like with the fire ordinance, it's such a good time, make a final decision on that.
One of the things that Joe mentioned yesterday, you might want to consider is if you want to include this splash pad as a
Right.
I think that's a decision you guys have to make, that I believe the police recommended that they be allowed on the splash pad because Route thirty-six is somewhat dangerous. But then it is more pedestrian or walkway than it is, uh, an EMA. I mean, it's a toy toss, it's up to
Yeah, how, how, why would that be reasonable about that?
And, you know, one of the issues we talked about is actually making sure we can enforce whatever we put in. Right, because we don't want to do something that we're not going to enforce.
You don't have to have a sign somewhere.
Oh, yeah, of course, signs should at least help you. You know, we talked about everything from not allowing them on the splash pad to allowing them on the splash pad, or pedal only on the splash pad. So you're not running sideways at high speed, right? But I think the important thing is that it's an appointment, Richard, if you agree, it's ready for council review.
For review, yeah, there, we had two comments, two questions, uh, that need to be reviewed, so.
Chris, is that, that's been, that was distributed in the, uh, this impact? It was in a pack, yeah, I took a look at it in the pack. I would just ask the council members to take a look at it. And if you have any high-level suggestions, observations, or objections, let's talk about it. Otherwise, we'll try to drive this one to five away to do with the five.
And again, it's just, it's a coin toss on this splash pad.
We'd like it, being able to ride on this splash pad, and we and Jim talked about it, we want to advise them on the splash pad. Ocean, pedal only, Ocean Avenue is
Go, pedal only.
Pedal only, limited speed, have some signage up there. We like that idea, you can chat over there on that one. Um, I know Jack, low, low speed up on the splash pad, because it is, there are a lot of people wanting dogs.
Yeah, the misery, so I didn't ask you about the electric.
Yeah.
Version, I feel, there.
Correct, I think the biggest thing I know for me, the bikes are going to always be everywhere, you know, this again, for me, with the low-speed vehicles, splash golf carts. That's the one that I see in the future, because they're starting to be sold everywhere now. And that's what I started seeing on the state highway, which is
We should try and come up with a, this chief, I talked with the police, the problem is, how do you enforce it? Because, you know, you're going, let's say, police owners Because, you know, if you go, let's say, police officer's driving north, and you see somebody going, you know, they turn themselves, turn around, and how do you stop this guy? How do you pull him over? It's, 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 uh, an awkward situation.
Well, you start with communication, right?
Yeah, but if you're talking about enforcing, you've got to have a point where you stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my point, you got to make sure it's something we can enforce. I think it's going to be difficult to enforce speed bikes pedal only on this splash pad. I, I, I just think that's a difficult thing to enforce, so how do you know?
Well, you see them pedaling, you know.
Yeah. Okay, once you're riding, you know, it's a difference.
They move their feet while they're flying.
It's a difference, if there's a moment thirty miles an hour. Yeah, there's a significant difference.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge, but it's like a soap bar, the fire pit, and how to actually deal with it. But I think the right thing to do is, they're prevalent, they're problematic, put something on the books so the police can do what they need to do.
For the tree removal, Joe.
Well, the, the, the C and D are, are companion ordinances that are necessary for our storm, uh.
That's T R A, so.
Yeah, for our storm order permit. Um, they require municipalities to have in place, uh, these two ordinances that basically deal with storms that were, and was being discharged into the estuaries. So, um, Greg put these two together, uh, we think we, the, the, the salt storage one is pretty, pretty easy and self explanatory, how, how municipalities can store salt, and what they have to do. Tree removal, though, there's some open hand, end questions, like what kind of trees? I, I think we should put this off until Greg gets here next, next month and explains it to us. But we need both ordinances, have to be in place.
Yes, that's, yeah, we all have to.
Thank you.
Everyone's like, hey, some more of my tree, Greg.
John's still trees, that's it.
Yeah. That counts.
Wonderful experience.
And assault storage, same as your orders for parking.
So we'll put that on the next meeting for, for Greg to go through with us.
Um, I spoke to Sam, I think Sam was the one, and we all know this, flooding events. But, uh, I think Sam wanted to speak to us.
He did, he did, he was concerned about the last rainstorm, the flooding that took place. Um, it, it was that, you know, it was out of the ordinary, I mean, I think we got seven or eight inches of rain in a, just a brief area. No, nowhere for it to go, and, and part of the design of the, of the parking lot was, is a problem, because it goes all to River, River Street. And that's where, you know, it, it just bogs everything down. Police had to deal with it. Um, I, you know, we're continuing to push on the backflow preventers for the state. I know Greg, I saw an email go out a week or two ago to the state, like, what are you doing? You know, what, what, I gave you the alternate design. We talked to, uh, I, I know Greg talked to Declan Scanlon, our, our senator, to say, hey, you know, it's, it's not, we're not asking a whole heck of a lot for the one up north. Uh, it, it's only one other manhole. We're asking for it, that's all we're asking for, a manhole. So, uh, they balked at that, uh, so I hope Declan can get involved. Um, but the ones downtown are up and running?
Yeah, I talked to Kevin the other day, he's super pleased with how it worked.
Yeah.
And he actually went around and inspected everything that he had, so.
And we also, I think we got, did we get a quote from Prem to do, uh, twice a year maintenance?
Not yet, but I, I did those requests.
We're, we're trying to get quotes twice a year to go, make sure they're functioning properly. Um, it's, uh, it's important to us, because unfortunately, the day after the guy leaves, something can clog the, but we think it's necessary.
Joe, I can make a couple of comments, because it ties into the whole bulkhead initiative. So during that heavy rain, I walked the town a couple of times, and it was amazing to actually watch, from my perspective, the check valves were working perfectly. The problem is, when you have a high tide, the check valves are closed, the ring board has nowhere to go. Interestingly enough, because we have flooding from ring board, we actually have water going out into the river, even though the tide was a little bit high, because it worked its way around the bulkhead, it's not there. So I mention all of this because I want to consistently understand that the combination of the improved check valves, the bulkhead, and pump stations that are going to be added, or that we have already, are actually going to solve our problem for almost all the storms that we have. And I agree with you, Vincent, that's the case, based on the dynamic I saw. What was happening, the waterways in Osbornet was unbelievable the other day. I was standing there, and the water was running around the last townhouse development like a rapid, you put a kayak in. It was running around that development, on Osbornet, into the pump station, and getting pumped out into the river under water. So the whole thing was just going like this, because there was no bulkhead to keep drinking out. So that changed, and it changed that dynamic, but the pump station did a really good job. The other thing I want to mention on this subject is you remember that we were going to come back and have a discussion about the cost benefit analysis, that was going to potentially be done by the bulkhead, because if we do a cost benefit analysis, it puts us in a dead position for grants. And Greg Glash has been having trouble getting in touch with Tetrachet, who is the company that does the cost benefit analysis. The person that does it left, they're trying to find somebody else. He messaged me yesterday, and he expects to have a quote by early next week for a cost benefit analysis to help us in the grant writing process.
Maybe find out where the guy went.
All, all of this is to say, that storm, if you watch what happened in New York City, it was thunder, like flooded and happened there. And I think it wasn't one loss kind of unique when you had that on the train. But I think the components that we're talking about here are all working the way we expect to ultimately fix the downtown area. So I remain very encouraged. Thank you.
I just mentioned this before, we should try and do something, and we're talking to John, is the bus stop, that water pools right there, long after the rain, and stop all that. And the reason I made that, because I saw on two occasions, people waiting for the bus, calling to their, sprayed right there inside the roof. And another problem is, sometimes the bus doesn't pull up right to the curb, a couple of three feet out, and the person has to step into the water. And I'm not talking about a little, I'm talking about four or five, and then the person had shoes soaked in under the bus. And then, and it's just right there, it's out, and with John and I were talking, and trying to figure, can we chisel out a section of edge falls to get it to the nearest drain and that? But that's just something.
It's a big area, I looked at it, um, when the water is running out of the lot, that's so we can't handle it. And I actually got a video, and I'll leave you a picture. Uh, the lifeline was standing there like ritz and off, like the car was going by, and the water was blowing up. But once the rain stops and the sewer catches up, there is a puddle, we're actually talking about, there's a lump, the pavement out in the road, and that's what goes up. So it would be a big danger to get it to make it to the source.
I mean, we, we know that, uh, Ocean Avenue is going to be repaid, we've been hearing about it. Um, and that will be the appropriate time, but I, I, I'm not optimistic. They keep talking about it and talking about it, and we haven't heard anything about it.
My question to them was, you paid it last time, why would it be better this time? Why would you not leave the waterfall in at all corners?
They, uh, they did come several years ago, I remember, when they were talking, when the contractor was going to do it, and then they would put off. And there was white lines with, oh, oh, where it, uh, where it pointed, right? They're probably long now, um, but they did come out and do something like that, uh, John, but I, I still don't know when it'll be in town.
No, they're not doing anything until the bridge is finished in, uh, three years.
Yeah, although the steel came in finally, if you noticed that.
That's pretty amazing.
That is amazing.
Yeah, you see that, yeah. I've heard of the trailer, the driver in the truck can, can turn the rear wheels separate from anything else, and that's how they maneuver the ground, it's really impressive.
Like a tiller, tiller truck.
Well, I think we still carry the ones, carry the, uh, the flooding topic to the next workshop, if Sam's time, but, um.
Yeah, I think there's improvements we can make, but I know we're focused downtown, but on some of the streets where there is a check valve, when it rains, and there's not enough pressure to open that valve, it floods. It's not terrible, it's current height, all the way to the roof, but there are small pumps that you could get there, and they deck up all the way there. With the bulkhead, although it leaks a little bit, it's very small and outgrewish, so we could improve that, right? And we should look at each of them, I'm just, the damage, because those are small pumps.
Yeah, and we, we, I mean, we've all listened to that, the whole, the whole town, but that came one time, so you can, you can go through it with the bulkhead, secondly, after years. Yeah, I think the community works and professionals are still keeping, you know, they have their supplies, so it's worth it.
Yeah, so the greatest fact, I would say.
Yeah, John's talking about some smaller pumps, not, not pump stations. You know, uh, one horsepower, not sixteen horsepower.
John, how many locations in town do you want to be right for that?
Well, I'm not totally familiar with the North Beach issues, other than the check valves aren't there. So once the check valves are in, we could create that bathtub.
Do you think it would be three or four?
Yeah, maybe three or four. Yeah.
There's three hotspots in North Beach.
Yeah, and, and I've looked at pumps, right? It, it pumps for five hundred bucks, and I'm sure there's electricity there, but this is, it's involved, right? But it's something planned, the next phase.
Right.
Um, S P, uh, next year's, uh, agreement with the SPCA, uh, is due, we received a letter from them.
And we had, I think, um, Captain Gary reviewed it, he's kind of a general expert.
And we're, you know, we're, uh, we're not far off from, uh, from demolition starting on all of the demo's properties. And that's going to cause some sort of movement of, uh, probably a, uh, significant number of animals down in that area.
When do you think that's going to start?
Uh, we're soon, I, I mean, I think that they were waiting till after, uh.
Summer.
After summer to start the demo, they're waiting, still waiting for their final capital permit, um, but, uh.
stray animals or?
Yeah, yeah, cats, probably.
Yeah, cats.
Hosses.
Yeah. We have a fox problem too, I don't know where they are, but they're.
Hosses are tiny, they lunch, right?
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Joe, on, on the SPCA thing, is it just straightforward that you should renew them?
Yeah, just to renew.
Nothing special about it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, Mayor, I have another topic for town discussion, okay? So the topic is whether or not we see writers potentially becoming film production destination. So we'll walk through a couple of points, and then just maybe a little bit of discussion. So one of our town employees approached me about our potential, and he's going to ask me to bring up this topic during one of our workshops. And if you're part of this, it's driven by the fact that with the Netflix build out of Fort Monmouth, I think when you look at what the building, and I was going through the numbers, it's a massive, it amounts to a screen, buildings and stuff. It just facilitated to do a lot of things. So there's an expectation that that's going to spill out on communities around, several of the nearby towns are actually pursuing this. What I would call Atlantic Islands and Highlands, now it's going to be its originalization, is common, how to talk about almost every medium, particularly by Atlantic Islands, is certified into this kind of stuff. Um, I know we had an experience a year or two ago that was done here, I've heard good things about it, bad things, so maybe it informs our impression a little bit. But here's the people, and I wanted to talk about, if we're interested in this, and I don't have an opinion on whether or not, this program is called Film Running New Jersey. It's actually a state sponsored program with this five step certification process that a town goes through. Um, that prepares the town to attract filming, film production companies. Um, you have to document things about the town, its attributes, what are the things that you could offer, what are your resources as far as hotel space, restaurants, accommodations, tells about the police and fire department, there may be pyrotechnics, blah, 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 all that kind of stuff. But there's actually a workshop that somebody from the town can go to, learn about this, to help better inform whether or not, whether or not we're interested in this. And then once, if you go through this, and it's not a very complex process, it's a five step process, the town gets registered as an interested party, and then that gets made available to film production companies, both in the area and outside of the area. In my mind, some of the benefits of this is number one, you collect fees, that can be in the thousands of dollars to do this. Number two, they also tend to provide some sort of improvement in the area, whether I'm going to make it up. They pay the area business pay, because they have to park a lot of cars, and we wanted to pay, assuming that's an example. But the other thing in my mind, there's a potential for exhausting the benefits for our merchants who struggle year round. And today could be a beautiful summer day, it doesn't matter that it's fifty out, somebody filming, you may look like the summertime on an October day. So there's potential benefits there. So that's a long winded way of saying, I'm curious from a county or council perspective, because in this registration process now, there's a lot of talk about mayor involvement, right? Because that's, that's the leading point in town, that the mayor designated somebody to represent the town, it's usually someone on municipal staff that does that. But the question is whether or not we're even interested in looking at the spurgers' potential approach, or something to like to do with that.
So is that where we want to go to that first meeting?
Yes, most likely, yeah. And so, so I'm just interested in, just really, are people interested in this or not? And if we are interested, I would suggest we ask for a volunteer on the council to understand it a lot better than one of my one page summary, before we make any decisions. Thoughts?
I can just give you, I know St. Mary's, there's a middle town, they had ninety million, and they had a, had a film developer come in and say, we use that, we use it for kids going in and out of, you know, town, quite. They got them two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for about two weeks, about, and, and they used that to turn, we paid their parking lots. But, uh, I, I, I agree with you, it's, I thought maybe, we've already talked to some of the beach clubs, they have unique facilities, and they're interested, maybe, uh, we work with them.
Other thoughts?
Far off this building right here.
Yeah, it's a lot of potential.
Do you want to see if maybe some of the going to be at the meeting? And get, uh.
I think that could be the base.
Yeah, because we can ask the staff, and that way you guys can order it now, maybe council does a little facility inside it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the first meeting.
There, there's a link to this Film Running New Jersey thing, which is really straightforward. It talks about the certification steps, it talks about the documents, what kind of resources they're looking for, how do you register for the workshop, and then ultimately, what's certification? And all it does, I think, is not expensive, and it's not all that follow, it just gets you in front of film production companies, then say, oh, Seabright's interested.
No, we're just, no, we're just.
I'm interested.
I'm just trying to think of the downside initially.
Yeah, I mean, I think downside is, this town can get congested on its own pretty quickly, so timing, and it's very difficult to dictate timing for a production company.
Yeah.
But if the timing works, it would be great, and I mean.
Sure, we have a competitor too.
Yeah, I mean, this is my background, it's my background, like, I've worked in film production, so I'm happy to volunteer if it's something that we want to pursue. But I would imagine from a resident standpoint.
Yeah, do you want to see if you can, if you're able to.
If I can.
Kind of attend that meeting.
I'm happy to, I, I think that the rub is going to be timing for us. Like, if it's, if people want to come and film in summertime, it's kind of like a.
Yeah, and I, my, my, I don't know, I'm scared about, my guess is that I can provide, and we can deny it.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm happy to, if it works.
Any, any, John?
I think it's worth looking into.
Jeff, any thoughts?
I, I think, I think that, um, we, we should have a minimum investigative, the fact that the house, um, the council has experience in that, in that area, that field, is a benefit. So like, like I said, a minimum, we should investigate and get more research.
Brian, any thoughts?
I think that is a path forward, I mean, it's step one is learn more about it, so I think if you're able to get in there, and if not, we can find some new staff, I'm trying.
Okay, Heather, you're a volunteer?
Yes, I am.
Good, over to you.
I'll send you the link.
A major point, perhaps, is that development in Fort Monmouth is extraordinary, it must be spin off.
Any reaction from, from safety?
I'll tell you, and, and no, this is great good, because, um, I know me and Jim, how we work, when, uh, Saffano's, with HBO, with Ford Walk Empire, NBC Universal did a thing about some of the year, they, they took over the entire region, so it can be massive undertaking, it can be a ton of people. They have deep pockets, they love this location, they'll come out, and it's within the, um, I guess the area of the, the screen actors and the unions, this is within their radius.
It'll be even more so in that, that.
It is something we should look into, because even though it's connected, we can do it on, it's all about the timing.
Yeah.
And you got to be careful, because if they say they're going to bring in ten trucks, or bring in a hundred trucks.
Right. Just park it safe.
Yeah, we should look into it, it's something that we could do, and they do great businesses, um, they break the cameras in, they go, they go everywhere, so it's something we should look into, because we've done these ones before, it's, it's all, it's overwhelming, but we could do it.
So how does that weigh in, anyway, in your mind?
If, if, it's about a time. If we, it's about the timing, it's either the one, uh, last summer, but it was during the weekend, it's pretty strict.
Right, because I'm on the beach lovers, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so we can look into it, absolutely.
Chad, any thoughts?
I, I got no negative reservations to it. Um, I think it's great, especially with the Netflix coming, it'd be, it'd be full shot.
And if we need to go fire, should you stand?
Seriously, that's the.
Dave, any thoughts?
It's good for the town, it's good for all.
Okay, good, thanks, Heather. That was a great one.
Great, thanks, guys. All right, so, and we got a couple of resolutions listed, I'll be on the next agenda, we can review those, and we have another one or two. Um, yes, aside from that, we're going to, we do have an executive session, there's a couple of, uh, items to cover today. Um, the litigation, and all that stuff. So, and then we won't be taking any action or any further discussion after executive session. So, uh, this wraps up the public portion of the meeting, unless anybody has any last thoughts.